Okay, welcome everybody to the work session number 20th, 2023 here. Town Hall, that's the Secretary of Treasury to call the role, please.
Scott Harwitz, President.
I'm here.
Wern Pell, Secretary of Treasury is here. Edward J. Warner, Jr.
Present.
Ann Walker.
Here.
And Mr. Parrish.
Present.
All right.
Ready to go.
Ready to go, okay. Let's, uh, let's jump right into it, all right? See, you got a pile of files here for us to go over for the waterfowl hunting location.
Okay, first up is for you, Scott, it's Mark Cotiere and John Scott.
Okay. You have some type of a letter?
We have a letter that says, "To who may concern, I'm writing to sincerely apologize for the oversight and not filing the necessary paperwork for mine and my father-in-law's duck blind in a timely manner. I understand the importance of adhering to the proper procedures and I deeply regret any inconvenience this may have caused. The duck blind inquiry has been in my father-in-law's name for over 20 years. Unfortunately, this year has been particularly challenging for our family. He was very emotional, which is now making me very emotional."
Do you want me to read at least?
Yeah, if you would. Sorry, I didn't think it would do that to me.
Or we could... This year has been particularly challenging for our family due to my father-in-law's health issues. In March, he underwent foot surgery followed by hospitalization in August. Subsequently, he began cancer treatments this fall. The health and well-being of my father-in-law took precedence during these trying times. It led to this unintentional lapse in filing the required paperwork. I want to emphasize that I genuinely believe that I had submitted the necessary paperwork for the duck blind. However, upon a recent review of records, I realized this had not occurred. I took full responsibility for this oversight and understand the importance of adhering to the rules and regulations governing the duck blind process. I deeply regret any inconvenience or confusion that may have arisen as a result of this situation. I am committed to rectifying this matter promptly and ensuring that all required paperwork is submitted in accordance with the Town of Southampton's guidelines moving forward. I kindly request your understanding and forgiveness for this mistake. Please let me know the appropriate steps to rectify the situation. I will immediately take the necessary action to ensure that our duck blind is properly registered and in compliance with all regulations. Once again, I apologize for the inconvenience. Thank you for understanding and assistance in resolving this matter."
Okay.
He was generally...
And you have everything.
Yep, he has everything and...
I just have a question. Did the Bay Constables get back to us on this one?
On this one, they did, yes.
This one, okay. I just want to make a mention to the board that we were a little bit late to send the, some of these, in this whole stack, to the Bay Constables. And on top of that, Rich was on vacation, so some of these don't quite have Bay Constable recommendation yet, but we wanted to at least present them to you and hold the ones that don't have the Bay Constable recommendation yet.
Okay. And I sent this right off and Rich was absolutely, he's never been, these guys have never been late before.
It's okay. Yeah, this, this is fine. This should advance it.
Yeah, yeah, he was very emotional, which I kept thinking in my head, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, and this whole activity is something that, you know, there's a lot of camaraderie among, you know, family members and friends.
Yeah, yeah. And he was, he was like, he's gonna make his daughter divorce me.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, we get it.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
This is a, it's a passion for these folks and I get that. And they, and you know what, I have, you know, the fact that they respect that we need to keep our regulations tight to keep the program running, you know?
Yeah.
Safe and, and sound, so they get that and I appreciate that too, so that's fine.
And he, he has another blind and he wrote all the paperwork in for that and he had thought in his head that he brought it in for...
It happens.
All right.
Fine, next one.
Okay, the next one is John Ventarella, permit 3239. This is a late renewal with a letter of explanation. This is for you, Mr. Pell.
Yes, is this his first time?
Yeah, my name is, yes, first time. He has two blinds. He says, "My name is John Ventarella and I'm writing to you because I have misplaced my blind renewal paperwork and honestly, I forgot. I had filled out my renewal but put aside the rest because I had to get, go get the notary. My apologies, I've never missed this part of the waterfowl renewal before. Honestly, I'm a little embarrassed as I have had these blinds for 30-plus years.
Yeah.
Again, my apologies and I hope you will approve me so I can continue this for myself and my family. Thank you for your attention, John Ventarella." So he has permit 239 and you're...
He's had it for a long time.
You're okay? And no, he's never been late before. This was also one that, that didn't...
I'm fine with it.
I did send to the Bay Constables, I haven't received anything back.
Said it for 30 years, I...
And then he also has permit 268, which is Mr. Parrish.
We haven't received the Bay Constable recommendation yet?
No, no, yeah.
Do you guys want to advance pending, advance pending that?
Well...
Or do you want to hold it?
I mean, the location's the same.
Yeah, the location's the same.
Do you have all the paperwork?
Yep.
If you have all the paperwork and there's no issues or complaints, nothing has changed and every I has been dotted and every T is crossed.
And it's his first time.
I think it's okay.
And the blind has been hunted for 30 years without a problem? I don't see, I think we should move it ahead.
Absolutely, move it ahead.
Okay.
So that's for 239 and 260.
And 268?
With the Constables, my concerns are safety concerns.
Right.
Public safety concerns.
Right.
New blinds and...
But if their paperwork is in order...
Yep, he has everything ordered.
And nothing has changed and the location is the same.
Next one is number 111.
And that's Michael Wright, which you spoke to...
He's right here. You would like him to come up?
There he is. Only because Mr. Wright has a concern.
You can't speak in there, you can sit here. Yeah, you gotta sit up here. You gotta sign in for the record, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Michael Wright, Southampton. So, yeah, this is one of those ones where I came to the trustee's office to renew it and didn't have the paperwork that they had sent and so when the ladies printed it out, they only printed out the one, which is, this is like, we have one blind and two spots. You know, I've renewed this every year. Fran, who hunts next to us, has two spots on the same permit, like under the same number because what it is, is it's a very narrow creek and we always just moved our blinds when the winds would change. That spot is not really a hunting spot anymore. The, the landowner behind it cut down all the, all the frag mighties and the reeds and stuff, so, I mean, I've been moving it once every year just for the sake of maintaining the spot, but, I mean, if you want to just make that spot go away. The only thing is that it just, it can't go back into the lottery because it's two blinds that are like a couple hundred feet across a creek. We'd be shooting at each other's faces if they were two...
It's up to you if you want to keep it.
Yeah, I'm happy. Ideally, I'd like to put them both onto the same paperwork so it's not these two things. I mean, I've done it every year, it's not a big deal.
We would just take the spot away, right?
This, this year, I just didn't have the stack. I mean, who knows, maybe it'll change in the future.
Right, and I, and I think we talked, right, Michael, you used, his, his concern is that he doesn't want us to go back into the lottery because he doesn't think it's safe for someone else to be...
Yeah, it's, I mean, maybe...
Or he wants to renew it.
Maybe it's 500 feet apart, but they're facing each other, so...
We have to deal with that.
Yeah.
We have to deal with that, so...
So we want to avoid the spot, maybe?
So do you want to...
Want to avoid it?
I think that's what we're looking to have it graded.
That's, that's fine, if you could do like Fran does where it just makes note that, I mean, listen, we're never gonna move it again, but...
Just be him on the other spot.
Well, once you, once we're aware of a public safety issue, we have to deal with it. So we'll, we'll address this so that...
Yeah, if you just, right, if you just delete that spot, that's fine.
Okay, then...
Let's get a, let's do that by resolution, that way there's no question.
Because there's another blind to the south of that, that's, so somebody else...
And you want to get a, you want to get anything from the Bay Constables to...
Yeah.
That, that's good information, but what I think should be a priority is, is setting forth a resolution to memorialize this and then indicate that in the system so that we don't end up...
Accidentally giving it to someone else.
Correct, because he brought some really good local information.
Right, and we're, you know, Rich has, Rich has been down there, he knows the situation. We always just register, because, you know, it goes back to Freddie Habelmeyer and the landowner had registered that spot, which is how it became a spot because he had the right to.
Yeah.
But then he never put a blind there for three years and so we just registered it so that it didn't get lost that way, but so as long as that's just, you know, recognized as not a place that another blind can go. Because our blind has been at the other spot for four years.
Then talk to Rich, have Rich write a letter and say that's, it's unsafe.
Well, we, we've got terrific public testimony here, I think you're gonna have to get started on the resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
You got, you got, yeah.
All right.
Cool.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for coming and speaking.
Hey Lisa?
Yes.
In the resolution, you have to put the GPS area, so we know exactly where it is.
Yep. All right. Okay, so next is Michael J. DePerte.
So all these ones that are expired, non-renewal, we created a list for all of you guys if you want to reach out to them and hold all these. That's what we've done in the past.
They're all, these are...
So we have all their numbers split up by your area. We can just probably go ahead and hold all those.
Okay.
If that's what you'd like to do, that's how we've handled it in the past.
That's probably...
Anyone that has expired non-renewal, I don't have a letter or anything.
If your name is next to them, just give them a call. We'll hold them until the next work session.
You're gonna give us that?
It's, we're passing it down right now.
Oh, perfect, okay, cool.
And then you just gotta call them before the next work session so we know how to move forward.
Great.
Thank you.
Actually, I need to know before the agenda's published, so, uh, next one, sir. Please.
And then Ed, Jeremy Allen, permit 99. He's off the waitlist. He has accepted this, this area. He has all his, his hunting licenses, duck stamp and everything. Rich said all looks good on his end, approved pending trustee board, if I know approval.
Okay.
James, where is that? Draw back just a little bit further, please.
Shuka Hills. Atterbury Road.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna advance?
Yep.
All righty. And then the next one is gonna be held, held. Anne Randolph Rice, permit number 145, late renewal with a letter. Hold on one second. Okay. So, just so you know, Keith McCallum, who is also permitting on this blind, did have his application in on time. Mr. Randolph came in, "I'm late renewing my duck blind permit due to a delay in bringing family members to Florida and had to stay an extra week due to illness in the family. Please let me renew my duck blind past due date this year and I do have, I, you, this is to you, Ed, you do have my vote."
That was a period. I don't know. Maybe we can retract that.
Oh boy.
Do we have, did he submit all of his paperwork?
Yeah, he has all his paperwork, yep. He has all his paperwork and this was one of the ones that did go to the Bay Constable because Richie's on vacation.
Okay.
They've never been late before.
Right, and there's a, an explanation, so I think we should advance this.
Okay. And then there's Robert Renner. He also put in a letter. Uh-oh. And I apologize. I did send it to the Bay Constables and they were fine with it.
There's a letter of explanation though?
Yeah, there was. I made them write it while I was standing there.
Okay.
It must, maybe it's in one or the other.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Might be mixed up in here.
You know what, maybe we could go on and then if you find it, but does he have all his paperwork?
He has all his paperwork, he's never been late before.
Okay.
And he has a letter of explanation, satisfactory.
Yeah, he does.
I mean, I think it's sensible to think it's okay.
Yeah.
It should advance.
Then we can move forward.
You should definitely move forward.
Yeah.
Yes.
I watched him write it.
Yeah.
I just don't know what to do with it.
It's okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
It's on the record that they did and there's no changes and...
And then this is Eric Hagan. The next one, that was, this is the gentleman who wanted a blind in Mulva Hill Pond. Richie said that the other two areas were resting spots and then you had asked, didn't you, you were gonna reach out, whether it was a duck blind or a duck boat?
Yeah.
And he got back to me, "It's a duck boat."
So, so the question was access was the question?
No, it wasn't, well, it was boat access. It's the launching because there's no actual launch.
Getting that actual boat to the water.
Boat, with a boat?
Well, you'd have to put it in, I think that was your question.
So the thing was, could you physically get, he must have access for a boat. I mean, if it's, if it's aluminum boat, all you need is a four-foot wide trail through the woods to drag it.
And there is a trail.
Could be a scooter.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So I'm, I'm fine with it.
Scott, how do you feel?
Yeah, I mean, as long as they can get what they need to get there.
Okay. Then that's fine. And I'll call...
Because you can carry a small boat, no problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've done that myself.
Yeah, he said it's a single.
Yeah.
So it can't be two.
It's a scooter.
Okay, I'll call Mr. Booth.
Mr. Hagan.
Hagan.
No, the next one.
Oh, the next one, yeah. So we're holding.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. The expired.
Okay.
Are there two?
And again, also, there is two on this, on Booth's. And the other one is Finn Kelly and he had his in on time.
Okay, so it's just Booth.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then the three for Mr. Parrish are all, there's only one that has a letter and that was John Ventarella, so we already, the other two are just, they did not send a letter or renew.
Correct.
So it's just a hold.
The couple that I have here, Finn, Maids and Dunn, so there's no correspondence from any of them?
No, none of them either.
And the Bay Constables have not?
Finn, I think actually, which one is that?
Scott Finn?
Yeah, I believe he put his paperwork in. Let me just see. Yeah, Finn Kelly put his in. Scott Finn and Charles Maids, yes. Scott, Scott did put his in, his paperwork in.
Okay.
But Charles did not. Yeah, and he was on time and he has everything.
So we're holding it, waiting for Mr. Maids' paperwork to come in? And then Craig Dunn?
He also, he's the only one, I think, on that one?
Oh, yep.
And he did not, nothing, I got nothing.
So I have numbers here, I'll give them, call. All right.
All righty.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, guys.
Thank you, Lisa. You're doing a good job there.
Good job. It's going smoothly, Scott, leave it alone.
General permit applications for determination. I've got coal environmentalists, take care now.
Thanks, Mike, for coming.
Bye, Mike.
Coal Environmental Services for 23A West Tiana Road. Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you. Okay, resulting to proposed pedestrian water access path.
Pretty much the conservation board is, is good with the project as long as there's minimal natural vegetation removed. Everything else is good, like penetrate decking, so they recommend...
Yes, we just wanted to take that one extra step out of respect for the adjoining jurisdiction.
Okay.
And, and get their comments on there to see if we can, you know, incorporate that as well. So we took that extra step for, you know, for the interest of the environment and for the applicant.
Great.
So I think that, right, and, and you're going with, if you want to read into the record what your project is.
Yeah, so we're, thank. This is an Asbilly, right? Yeah, there's a, there's a current existing dock and we're just basically bringing the dock into compliance with the Blue Above Canadian E.C.
Correct, and now you've, you've met that.
Great.
Okay, like I said, we've even taken the extra step to...
Wonderful. Is the next step just getting stamp plans and submitting to you guys?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Exactly. Okay?
All right, perfect. Great, thank you. Thanks, help me so much.
Trustee Pell?
I have reason to smile. 183 Shore Road. Jeff? Do you have anything on that, James?
183 Shore Road. Let's see, you folks, nope?
Nope.
You have no reason to smile? No? Do you want to do, trustee Pell, you can review it? Is it complex?
Now, here, we had to move, you got, you got a letter in, you said from, right?
We got revised application, relieved and a revised plan. I think he should be here though for...
All right, then you think he should be here, then we just hold it then?
You want to hold it?
Yeah.
Okay.
The next one is a Zoom.
Maybe he'll come in later.
All right, so for now, we'll put it on.
Charles, can you let Mr. Baldwin in on Zoom?
Please.
Thank you.
That is not Mr. Baldwin.
No, that's Joe.
Hey, Joe.
That is... Can't hear you. Can you unmute him, please? Charles?
What, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we, you, will we update you on, on the recent letter?
Let's, let's just...
Just hit an address. Address is 45 Cedar Crest Road, Southampton.
Let's just briefly describe the project so the public can understand what we're talking about here.
We're, we placed an existing bridge and, and dock and the bridge is 206 feet long. Um, the dock is 80 feet long and it crosses Davis Creek on 45 Cedar Crest's property on the south side and the north side.
Okay. And then you have some updates for the board?
Yes, I recently received a letter on last week, November 13th, from the New York State consistency by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineering and they reviewed my project. They had a number of questions, went back and forth with...
And then he froze.
Then, and at the end of the letter, they said, "Therefore, on further people's activity by the Department of State, Department of Current Individual Consistency Certification for proposal activity are not required." It forms up there. So, I mean, I'm not...
Sir, I apologize.
I understand, they approved it.
Okay, that's the short version because you did freeze on our end here, so we missed most of that.
Okay, basically, I got a letter from the Department of State regarding the U.S. Army Corps of Engineering, New York District, and I, the letter says...
Maybe turn off, maybe turn off your video and then we'll be able to hear you anyway? If your internet's unstable?
I'm not that, I'm fine.
So you, you got approval?
I don't know how to do this.
You, you got approval from the other regulatory...
Okay, stop video. Okay, I'm gonna stop video now. If you were starting...
You have approval from the other regulatory authorities is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's all right. Don't, don't worry about messing with your thing there.
And then Mr. Baldwin, how are you? Mark McRedmond, counsel to the trustees. I know you have my email, would you mind sending me a copy of that letter so I could read it?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
That would be helpful.
Do we have one file?
Mark, I sent it, I sent you that last week.
You sent me, sent it to me? Okay, I'll, I'll check.
You have that last week.
Okay, also, while I'm speaking with you, I spoke with, I emailed the opposing counsel's attorney and we've gone back and forth. I know you and I have had a few conversations about this. All they're requesting now is the, the latest version of whatever you're submitting. They, they claim to have gotten a couple of different versions, so they just want to know before they give you that letter of support, what the actual latest submitted plans are. So if you could send that to them, I think you'll probably be on your way.
I'm all the...
I think that the neighbor has right to go over it.
I already gave, sent it to him, I'll send it to him again.
Well, they, they, they say you've sent it to him a couple of times, but they're different, so they want you to send just the very latest version. I know there's been some changes along the way.
So there's pending litigation? There's pending litigation on this?
It's my understanding there's no pending litigation, Mr. Baldwin, but there is an easement holder? Correct.
That is correct, they have a, there's a, what, Mark is...
If you would turn on this video.
Right, is it right-of-way holder? And I will again send updated plans and, and then we'll do the next step after that. If you, if you get the letter from them, Mark, is that, once that's resolved, if there's no other open issues, can we move forward?
That'll be up to the board.
Yeah, we'll have to review all these documents and get the updated plan. Are you planning any time to be back here in New York? Are you gonna stay there?
I will be, the, the timing might be rough, I will be over, over Christmas holidays. I'll be up there, but I think I'm on administrative next weekend, I guess, is it December 18th?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a little, it's a little challenging going back and forth here, but we're gonna have to review all these documents and then I think we could, you know, we'll give you an email or a call and see what the next date is that it will be on for the board to take an official action. So we want to, we want to move it along, just like you want to move it along, but we need to dot the i's and cross the t's on this, so the, the sooner we can get to review all the documents, you know, then we can get moving on that.
Ed, did you have a question?
You also have to check on the right-of-way.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if it's, it's a foot right-of-way or exactly what it says.
Well, where, where, the right-of-way goes...
He's already looked at you, or he looked at it, right, Mark?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't recall if it was, uh, I think it was just the right of, right, to pass through the property. And also, I believe...
Over the bridge into the other side of, to mechanic barriers?
I think it's the, the whole length, and I believe there's also, um, from what I, what I read in my conversations with Mr. Baldwin, there's also an arrangement where there's a partial, I believe thirty percent obligation for the right-of-way holder to contribute to the maintenance of that walkway and dock pursuant to agreement. We froze it.
We just want to make sure.
That is correct. There's...
The right-of-way, don't want to put his own...
That's correct. There's a one-third obligation by the right-of-way holder. Here's a ten-foot right-of-way from the runs along the, the east side of my property, down to the bridge, across the bridge, and also the property on the beach side, uh, to the bed.
So if, if the bridge has to be away from the ten-feet boundary anyway?
Yeah.
So it'd be out of the right-of-way.
But if it's out of the right-of-way, would the...
Do you not understand that?
Other person still be allowed to use it, because it's not in the right-of-way?
You have to put it covered, but we can't put it right with the...
I think the, the attorneys have to speak about this, and we need to review the documents, because it's...
Yeah.
It sounds a little more complicated than at first glance. Well, that's what I was saying, is we really need to take a look at the plan, take a look at these documents. The board's got a...
That's what we were talking about before.
Right.
And then we'll advise him what the next step is.
And if you have any updates, Mr. Baldwin, since the last time you and I spoke, send them to James in my office. He'll forward them to me, and I'll look over everything again. Because I know there's been a few changes along the way.
I'll, I'll put...
Of the bridge?
Yeah.
Everything's been said.
I think you already...
And the width between the span and the pile is...
I'll put it all together. But you see the survey, you see the current plan.
Should be ten feet.
I haven't been in a while, my boat.
It's closed.
Okay.
All right, so let's... Yeah, definitely hold it. Yes, definitely holding. Let's look at all the paperwork, let's look at the plan, let's make sure we have everything, um, and then we're all on the same page before we go to the next step, and then we will advise at the earliest time that we could go to the next step. Fair?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's a hold. All right. Yep, we have, uh... Sendringham. Sisu Weiner and Weiner and Coal Mountain LLC. They're, I believe, they're both First Coastal. Now, are they adjoining properties, or they...
No.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Billy Mack, First Coastal.
Good morning.
How is everybody? Congrats to you guys.
There's a history here, you might want to go back.
Yeah, so it's the two, uh, properties, the, the property in the middle just got sold, so that person's likely coming aboard. But, um, so the history on these is, um, I don't know, probably about ten years ago, we did a biolog project there.
Longer than that.
Longer than that, sorry.
Yes.
And then several just restorations with sand. They've subsequently, um, kind of eroded, and now it's exposed again. I think it was that Christmas storm last year that did the big damage.
The biolog, I believe there was two biolog projects done on one, on one of the houses, and they last for four to five years, and then they, the biologs literally disintegrate, and then the storm washes them away, and then, and we start all over again.
Yeah, unless they get hit. If they get hit by a big storm, then they just, you know, they, there's no evidence right out of the storm.
Yeah.
Lot of energy in this area.
Yeah, it is, as you guys know it.
I don't see biologs working out here.
Yeah. So, and what we did, again, a couple doors down, was, um, work with you to, uh, to get a covenant on the property to continue sand on the structure, as long as the beach is monitored and does not reduce, uh, the width by a certain...
Yep.
I think it was like, you know, twenty percent or something like that.
Yep, I believe that was the numbers we had worked with initially.
And we'd monitoring the other project. We do, uh, did, and that has, the beach fortunately has remained the same, but who knows what's gonna happen in the future, and that this protects the trustees on the road that you guys own.
Yep.
Uh, but then it also keeps the property from the upland crumbling down. So, um, we're looking to do that similar project that was approved previously for these two properties, and then likely dovetail the middle property in.
Yeah, I mean, it's a shame that all the properties along there wouldn't come in with an application, so we could look at maybe a more modern version of a living shoreline kind of application, where they're segregated like that, that's not, it's probably, that won't work, because it'll get ad-flanked, and the property in the middle is, you know, unfortunately...
The best thing we could do is just build in returns until the person in the middle here, uh, you know.
It is a highly erosive area. I mean, after Sandy, a lot of the material got pulled off the banks and, uh, you know, dumped on the beach, so, uh, you know, we, I, I've been down there personally and witnessed what has happened. You know, it's, it's something that needs to be done, but, you know, we, I'd like everybody on the board to have a little bit of comment on it, because it's, you know, it's on the Shinnecock Beach Road, it's our fifty-foot right-of-way easement there, so, uh, working with the attorneys over the time I've been on the board, I think it's about sixteen years, I've had four different attorneys craft different versions of agreements. Now, Mark, you're familiar with this, because you've done a couple of these, you know, latest ones, which is a little bit different than what we have in the past, so, um, you want to start, uh, working on, um...
Drafting something.
Drafting something for both of these properties, so we can review it in the process of doing a review of the application.
Sure. We're also working on, uh, I'm hoping the meeting after December fourth, I'll have the draft for you on new covenant and restrictions procedures.
Okay.
That will be submitted by applicants from now on.
It's key.
I'll explain more in detail.
It's absolutely key, because the activity that you're talking about is obviously bad for the, for the property owner, but good for the maintenance of the Shinnecock Beach Road, because that's how it replenishes itself, so you're disrupting a natural process, so you need to compensate, mitigate for that. So that, that, um, agreement is, is very important to the public, the trustees, and, um, you know...
Yeah, the applicants are, um, well aware that this covenant is coming, so they're happy to review it.
Well, if, if you pull out, James, can you pull out and show us Far Pond? If you want to know where all the material is ending up, it's going into Far Pond. I mean, we got over the pond. Go, yeah. No. That's Far Pond. That's Far Pond. You see on the west side, all that material, that thumb that goes in there?
Yeah, that's all.
All that material came from, you know, west...
Dredged and placed that sand up.
Well, that's...
What's the height difference between those properties?
Uh, those bluffs are all about, uh, anywhere from fifteen to eighteen feet.
The one in the middle's all the same?
All the same. Yeah, it's pretty consistent.
So, yeah, I mean, our issue is with Far Pond is to have it dredged in a way it reduces the erosion on the east side, and still keep a, a somewhat of an environmental or navigable channel to access the pond. We're in the process of working with, uh, InterScience to get a permit for us to do an excavator, just to move the material that's right closest to the west side, to pull that out, and do beach nourishment, whether it's west further, yeah, I mean, kind of like what we do at, uh, at Mecocks, we put it in on the beach, and then you guys put it, bluff restoration or doing restoration, and then two storms later, we get it back, and it's kind of like... You got an all-hands-on-deck situation, you want to... But I want... You got the state, you got the county, everyone's trying to figure out the best solution. Everybody.
Yeah.
You can see, you can see where it goes in there.
Yes. Yeah, but I, I like to, like, we discussed with all the residents around Far Pond and, and Middle Pond in that area, we need to come up with a longer-term plan, and this is, this is part of the plan.
Okay. Well, these guys are looking to at least do this interim protection until some longer-term plan is...
So do you want to present the proposal that you have for us today, as far as the rock revetments and stuff, so we can have that to think about also?
Yeah, totally. And when you guys want to meet, review, happy to do that.
Okay.
Obviously, the covenant's a big feature. So, uh, once we can get that in front of the applicants, they can have their comments, and you guys can have the, the comments on the...
And both one of the projects are the same, so why don't we do one of them right now?
Yeah, sure.
To, for the board to, uh, understand what's being presented.
Yeah, it's, um, it's a, it's a stacked rock revetment. Uh, which one are you doing?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay. Right. Yeah, this is almost identical. We have a D C permit for this activity, by the way, and, uh, we would just have to update it, but that, this also includes a dock. But the, the key part is the, uh, the protection, and that would be a stacked rock revetment that would be built on filter fabric and, um, a core bedding or, uh, riprap bedding. And, uh, it would be covered with sand, planted with beach grass, and that would be continued to be monitored.
What's the size of the rocks?
There, I believe, I don't know, can you zoom in on that? Might be a cross-section.
I think you're off taking the dock hold.
Think so?
Yeah, I think you're off separating, because the dock, the, look, you have no water where the dock is.
I know.
So you're gonna...
One, two, three.
So you're gonna go back and forth to your client, you know? It's like always with the dock.
Well, I mean, I figured them before you guys on this.
Is there any... There, there is yew grass like fifty feet off the beach, and that's why the dock to the west, the three properties are, it's only fifty, forty feet long.
It's just access for, you know, small whaler or something like that.
Yeah, but you have no water at the hundred feet, don't you? It's only forty-two difference.
Yeah.
Yeah. That doesn't make sense.
No.
No, that's why we pulled the one back, which was the green lawn property, to where it was originally...
You might as well, you know, either pull it back before, or get rid of it.
Well, we're...
You're gonna waste a cup of meat going back and forth.
Right, no, well, I'd love to, you know, wrap them all together, 'cause...
There's no water, there's absolutely no water there.
No water there at all.
At low tide at a hundred feet, it's like, in the, in the winter time, it's gonna be dry.
Yeah. Well, one point two, they can, they can handle that. I don't know about the, uh...
No, but it's, it's...
Point seven.
Yeah, but that's, there's all yew grass right there.
Yeah, it's, it's a waste.
That's, that's the problem, is we've been, we've had applicants before discuss docks in this area, and we've always been very, uh, you know, basically saying no, because of the yew grass that's there. I mean, and no matter what you put there, you're gonna be right in the yew grass.
I'll do an inventory on the yew grass.
Okay.
Yeah, to confirm that.
But as far as the structure on the beach with the stones, you're gonna, it's not gonna be completely vertical, it's vertical, it's gonna be like, almost on a forty-five degree angle, so for a wave of, you know, you know, attenuation.
Reduce that energy, yeah.
Yep. And, and the rocks that you're proposing to use now, they're not gonna, we've had certain projects where they've used, uh, almost like bluestone that were very sharp and, you know, not like local, uh, rocks. They're, the last project that was done there, they're more of a natural Long Island rock, so that's what we're looking for.
And that's what, that's what we install. Yeah, those are round, and actually, you guys require that.
Yeah.
If it's uncovered, people climb on it, they don't get hurt.
Yeah, yeah. These are native, um, natural stones.
If the water hits it, the space is a lot easier.
Spreads it all over the place, yeah.
The shop might just cut it.
Yeah, they're a little harder to find, those stones, because they're native, they're local, they, you know, come out of, when people dig up foundations and stuff like that, so, uh, but that's exactly the stone that we use, is native stone.
And then covered with sand?
Covered with sand, planted with beach grass, and at a nicer pitch. There's a wall that's two or three doors down from this, it's almost vertical.
That's...
So we're trying to alleviate that.
Yeah. That's, that's Fabrika's property, Yolanda Fabrika.
That, that was the one walked out.
That was the first one that we entertained, because there was a bulkhead there.
That's right.
And then they reconfigured the rocks, the shape of the bulkhead, and made a promenade there, and the rocks that they were used were flat and pointy, and stacked straight up.
Straight up.
And Billy and I and Eric walked down here, like, this isn't what we envisioned.
That was quite ugly.
Well, that's why... That's why, yeah. That, that, that slope is really important, if you talk about wave attenuation. More than that. When you were first on the board, yeah. In, in any of this stuff.
Yeah, the space is...
The design, it has to be done the right, otherwise you, you...
Is beach, is beach grass sufficient for the vegetation?
Uh, beach grass is ideal because of the root mass. However, if it gets it by wave energy directly, the sand will erode and erode the beach grass. So, um, there's very, I don't know of a better vegetation other than beach grass.
Groundsoule or bayberry, or anything like that?
Uh, they don't have the, the dense root system that holds the sand that is the best, so we do incorporate that a lot, but the beach grass is the part that holds the sand the best.
Okay.
Yeah, the higher the bushes and shrubs are, when they lose their rooting, they literally pull everything down.
Craters.
Even when we did the biologs, there's still remnants of beach grass, the plantings that were still, are still there after the biologs were washed out, and some of the cliff was washed out.
Washed out.
So it did work pretty well.
For vegetation, I think beach grass is, you know, the best answer there.
So we still have a bit of work to do.
Yeah, so we'll put this on hold and work now...
But happy to, uh, push it along.
No, okay.
All right. And talk more about it. Thank you, guys.
Yep.
You don't have anything else, right, Billy? It's just one that's a stamp plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Carmine Point Drive LLC, thirty-five Carmine Point Drive. Is there anybody here representing? I don't see anybody. James, we went back and forth with the applicant on this, asking for, uh, changes in the plans and updates and everything. Do we have everything we need to move this forward, or is, are we still holding on to it?
Uh, I know we have stamp plans.
Okay.
Um, which are up right now.
It's far enough off the extended property line. We did pull the dock back to two and a half feet of water. Meet Blue Book now?
It appears so.
What do you want to, uh... We went, we've asked the applicant a couple of times to resubmit plans and resubmit, uh, the cover sheet, so I think it's close, or is it approvable now, or... I mean, if you're not sure... No, I mean, I'm just, because that's the latest paperwork that was sent. That's, that's, that's not, uh, that's kind of a mess. That's a mess. But I can read it, hang on, hang on, hang on. Good luck. Four foot wide.
Just wanted to make sure it's the, yeah, it's the most recent.
Okay. Four foot wide, to the extent, maybe four by a hundred, that meets the pier line. Yep. Right? I mean, when I looked at this... So it meets all the, it meets all of the blue book? I, I believe the last cover sheet was what we needed, so...
Doesn't look like they have a floating dock on here, though.
Well... Hang on a second.
They don't have a floating dock on there.
All right. It was like, by four feet wide, and sent up to a hundred feet.
So they still need the floating docks, don't they?
Yeah, we...
Maybe we could ask them to type it.
Six foot, you know, aluminum to dock. Yep. Four foot and eight foot long piece of, what does that say?
Piece of plastic.
Composite wood or plastic or aluminum. So is that the, is that the dimensions of...
No, they, they have on their plans of six foot by twenty floating dock.
All right, well, let's hold it and have them rewrite the, uh, cover sheet. And have you put the, put the, uh, if they rewrite the cover sheet and include the six by twenty float, then I think it's fine, right? But it should be typed out, not... Right, exactly, but, and they gotta add that float. Yes. So it, that's, that's what he's gotta do, so it could advance if they do that, because then it meets... Well, I, I'd rather get everything and then approve it. Yeah. Because that's all. Yeah, no, I want to make sure we got everything, because we advance these in pieces, parts, and then it creates more work. So he's gotta type it and just add the floating dock. Yep. It's approvable. All right. All right.
So, uh, sorry, you're holding it, or advancing it pending those...
No, we're gonna, we're gonna hold it to the next, yeah. Add the float, that way the float, floating dock is approved with the application, and there's no question. This has been back and forth for about eight months, so it's holding it for another meeting, it's not gonna... It's okay. And it's, and it's the winter time, so... Exactly, it's not gonna get done now, anyway. So that way, it gets a nice permit approved the right way, with the float on there. I'll give you oversight that it's not on there. Okay. All right, so we're going to the next one. The Kristen G. Wilding Irrevocable Trucks, Six Mill Pond Road, Coal Environmental Services.
Hi, guys.
Good morning.
Good morning. So I know, Ed, that you and I discussed, because he's just looking to replace his bulkhead in place and raise it, the proposed foot, and you and I discussed that you'd be more comfortable with six inch raised.
The raised, the height of the bulkhead that's to the north?
Mm-hmm.
And looking at the property, and the, that would be the right height to balance it out there. Because if it goes much higher, then it's gonna be catching floodwater, that's the biggest, 'Cause if it goes much higher, then it's gonna be catching floodwater, that's the biggest, my biggest fear down there, because it's, the property's pitched a little bit and it's not pitched enough to get rid of it.
Yeah, the, the property owner's concerns are that, um, so eight and ten are about the same elevation, um, as six, but eleven is about ten to twelve inches higher, and eight and ten both need to be, um, replaced. And eight would be going in for an application, but they're, uh, currently selling, so.
Yeah, that's the lowest one of the three along there, that's a pretty low bulkhead.
So, he's concerned that they're also going to raise to, or propose to at least match or come close to eleven, and then he's going to be
Well, the nor-, yeah, the, well, I mean, the northerly one would be, the, the one with, the six we're looking at
Mm-hmm.
and the one to the north of it is, you know, consistent, because the bulkhead is high, the dock is high, decking, and also the land behind it's the same. So when he raises this up, it'll be consistent with that one, and he's gonna do some dredging to put some fill in it to raise that up. The next one we'll look at when it comes in, doing that a little bit higher. I mean, you're never gonna stop a full-on flood there, that's, that's, you know, that's not realistic.
Yeah, I think the flooding is more from, uh, groundwater than anything.
That's the wind, the wind drives the water up and it's not based for the water.
Well, it'll come right down a little, like, right down the street, Billy.
Yeah, I think during Sandy, that's what
Yeah, so, I mean.
The main issue was.
Better off in a storm like that.
Yeah.
Well, you also, you don't wanna build your property in a way it's gonna hold all the floodwater, you wanna be able to have to shed the water off and shed it in a way that's not gonna pull all the bad stuff off the property too quickly either, so it's, it's kinda like a balancing act here.
Absolutely. Um, so, right now, we have it proposed, um, from the lowest point of the bulkhead, 'cause it varies. Would you be comfortable with, uh, us going from the highest point?
That would be, that would be practical, because then it'd be consistent all the way along, the two properties. And then as the next one comes in and the next one comes in, you know, we, you know, we're gonna entertain them moving south on the, on that canal.
Okay. Does, yeah, the client is pushing, he, he would like to have as much as, as he can get.
Yeah, I mean, the property looks nice, it's got Montauk daisies and nice, you know, everything there, nice indigenous, you know, vegetation, so it's, 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 it's a good project right now, but just elevating it a little bit is, is not gonna make that much difference on the property, but it, it will give him a little bit more protection.
Okay. Alright, so we'll get you stamp plans and, and we'll just have it, so it'll just be from the, the three point five instead of the.
And, and you said they wanna get rid of the vegetation and just?
Just do gravel.
Do gravel, a ten-foot gravel area?
Anything that, um, anything that's native can remain, but anything that's not native will, will be removed, but ideally he just wants gravel.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, there's lawn behind it in every direction, so the gravel will at least allow some permeability before it ends up in the bay.
Yeah.
Filtration.
Yep, somewhat.
So updated cover sheet and plans for the, uh, lowering the bulkhead height from four point two, you proposed at three?
Yeah, so we'll do it from, yeah, six inches from the, the three point five.
And you're removing both bulkheads, right? There's, there's a bulkhead and then there's a bulkhead out, and it's an incarnated place removal, right?
Yeah.
Make sure you're not stepping out further.
Nope.
No.
No, no, no.
Okay, so I'll take, get, the, the Creosote and the CC are getting taken out.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, we're just going, yeah, right in place.
Okay.
With the, with the two returns.
Good.
Alright, great, thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Eleven fifty-one Flying Point Road Watermill Dynamic Legal Services, Kevin Springer. I'm just gonna, um, pass this information down. So, this is a property that, um, sand was replenished on following, uh, the long dredge of Neacock's last winter. And the applicant installed a, uh, walkway, and they're now looking to legalize that. So, um, we, there are several things that need to be addressed here. Um, number one would be, uh, plans. But I just wanted to start the conversation so that you all are familiar with this property as we work forward.
The old walkway have a permit?
James, do we know that? Did the old walkway have a permit?
I'm not sure, but it was removed.
Because if the old one has a permit, then, uh, you know.
It's not the same, if you look at the plan up there, they had a wood deck and everything, that was all removed, so it's gonna be more streamlined, it's more streamlined than that one.
We wanna make sure that, that it's, you know, a note in the file that has been removed.
Wait, say that again, we wanna make sure what?
That there's a note in the file that has been removed. That way, ten years passes, so they don't wanna come back and say, there's wasn't a permit, let's do it again.
Okay.
Just wanna have a clear record of what is occurring here, what he's saying.
Okay. Yeah, no, there's several things, uh, that need to be addressed on this.
And the footprint of the outer terminus of the project is not gonna deal with any beach grass, correct?
So we don't have plans here?
It's, the plan is the sketch on the survey.
That's, that's.
We had requested updated plans and as-built plans, um, and he's, and Kevin was gonna work on getting them, he thought he was gonna be here today, maybe he shall, but.
There's nothing action about here.
No, and we're aware of that, but, uh, again, as I said.
And the elevation, you don't need handrails on it, so it's.
When, when they install this?
Do we need an advisory letter?
I, I believe we asked for one, so we're, it's pending, or I will ask for one.
It's pretty new.
Let's do that.
Ed, you also wanna make sure that, uh, there's enough space for something like to go between these cracks.
Well, that's the whole thing, it's really.
Should be flo- flowed through.
Well, that, yeah, that's light penetrating decking and then whatever vegetation will grow underneath it.
You know, I'll, I'll hold it there.
When did he install this, do we know?
Uh, had to be after, uh, the.
Probably between, we finished the work there in February, um, so between March and sometime over the summer.
If there's three eighths spacing between those deck boards, it's compliant, Bill.
Well, and people probably saw it and should have probably said something like, you know.
Billy, if there's three eighths spacing between the deck boards, it would be compliant as far as long ago.
You have to find that out.
Yeah, it look, there, it looks like it's.
So that's another question then for Kevin?
See here, it's, has some spacing. Yeah, ask, ask him.
Okay.
Make sure it's compliant to our blue book.
Okay. Alright, so this is a hold pending several items. Um, fifty-six Nyack Harbor Road. Brian Mims, permit guy. Okay, we've been going back and forth on this for a while. So this is, um, existing dock to be replaced, construct, uh, thirty-two foot fixed pier through flow with, uh, ramp and a float. As per plans, all materials to be untreated. We had questions as to the length of the dock, um, with the, we needed a height, uh, bathymetry study, we needed, um, the length of the dock pursuant to the width of the creek. Um, there were a couple other things that we had been looking for, so perhaps we'd like to address.
Could you do overhead on this, Mike?
That we talked about last time. Concern about how, um, how far the dock was gonna be off the eastern property line.
Right.
And the prior plans didn't have
Okay.
that dimension. Now, we've added that in, so it's now ten point three. The concern was whether we were within ten feet or not.
Right.
Do the other regulatory authorities require a greater distance? I'm sorry. Do the other, other permits that you're, uh, required to get, require a greater distance of that or no? No.
There's bathymetry, I think on the survey, right?
Yeah.
'Cause we requested that. We may still need additional, uh, plots though.
Plenty of water.
Billy, there's plenty of, yeah, there's plenty of water in there.
It goes out, yeah.
Uh, what about a third, a third, a third? Is that on there? James, we were close, right?
Well, that, that's dependent upon where the channel is situated as well, so there are other factors that come into that, so.
Yeah, he, I think when we looked at it, you, you have the distance north of the dock, and if you, um, bring it down to where the dock is actually located, I think that it doesn't make it by like, uh, three or four feet or something like that when we measured it off.
So, in other words, if you pull your line down so that it goes straight out from the dock and across, rather than up?
The rules are that it needs to make a third of the channel width, it can't go out for, any further than a third of the channel width. So you'd have to do the width of the, the channel where the dock is.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can only go as far as a third of that width.
Third of that width.
So if it's, if it's, you have to bring it in by whatever amount of feet, you have to show that, and then the depth of measure, the, the depth of water at that inside of the float.
So you're gonna have to draw that back a little bit from our calculations, and you probably will need some additional, uh, plots for bathymetry in there because, uh, we weren't sure about the depth of water when you pull it back.
'Cause the, the depth of water is in the inside of float here at minus two point five, which is good, but if you bring it back, uh, we don't know what it is.
See, on this plan here, we show the dock and its, you know, overhead and then a side view, if you could plot the water depths along here.
On the plans.
On the plans, it would be really much more helpful to everybody to, where you could specifically situate the dock. 'Cause the inshore terminus of the dock should be at two point five, that's the starting point, and the dock would go out from there.
Which he has, he shows on here, but.
But it's on the survey, it's point is the plans, right?
I have the plans, so it'd be much easier.
We can do that, that's not, that's not gonna be an issue. I was just concerned if we're pulling the dock back, land, are we going to have a problem with the ten feet, but we're not? That's what I was doing, well, I think we actually pick up a couple of inches.
I think, yeah.
Couple of inches, just, so I think we're even better than where we were.
Exactly.
You pick it up because of the angle. Yeah. Alright, so I know what I have to get you.
Okay.
James, I did get you the, uh, updated cover sheet, though. Did you receive it?
Uh, let's see, I believe you did, yeah, I believe you did, but let me just, uh, pull it up here.
The one I have is from eleven six.
Eleven nine.
Eleven nine, sorry, yes, yes.
You have it?
Yes.
Okay, good, so we got that.
Um, but it, you know, depending on what you have to do with the movement of the dock, it might have to change.
I'm gonna have to change it. You've got an area where they match.
So we can just be in touch about that?
You need to have a stable.
Yeah, a stable frame.
Frame.
Yeah, these, these, the plastic ones work out well, you just don't put them on. They, and they, they hold together, they don't put treatment on them.
Great, so we have some work to do.
I have some more.
Okay.
Not too bad.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And happy Thanksgiving.
That's same for you. Congratulations to have you moved from last week.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, so that's a hold and keep going. Um, Lee Spiegel, one ninety-two Redwood Road, Village of Sag Harbor, Costello Marine.
Yeah, for future reference, don't go by our times that are listed on here, you're gonna remember. You're gonna get rid of those, 'cause.
Was confusing Billy Mack all the time.
I know.
Hello? So this is a living shoreline with three marsh sills, we've been going back and forth on this for a bit. We have recently received from the applicant, um, the US Army Corps permit, um, it's three marsh sills, using one and a half to two-ton rock along length of the shoreline. Backfilling areas landward of the sills with clean trapped in sand, approximately two hundred and fifteen cubic yards, creating a dune or a berm landward of the tidal wetlands, seaward of existing fence, raising the grade approximately two inches, two feet in elevation. Planting Spartina, Alterna Flora in the intertidal area, twelve inches off-center, and also planting, um, Cape American beach grass in the upland buffer area. Did you guys wanna?
I think at this point, we have secured, uh, DEC, Army Corps, and Department of State, all permits. And so, we're, we came back to you guys to get, um, some input on this level. We haven't, we put in an application to the Harbor Committee, we haven't gotten any response as of yet, even though we did do a preliminary from them, you know, they.
You did a presentation to the Harbor Committee already?
Yeah, we, yeah, basically three times we went to the Harbor Committee.
Okay.
It was nice. And, but we came to, you know, a conclusion, this is the way to go, and they helped us with the design. I think the critical aspect that they took, talked about was the permeability of the wall. When we do our rock, most people keep them tight. We kept them about two to three, four inches apart, so this wall will actually be permeable, so the water will pour in through the wall, and it also comes from the inlet. And recede, so actually, you, or should not get that scar that you seen some of the other types of designs.
Yeah, it was only, the water would be relieved on both ends, but it's gonna be relieved through the whole structure.
The whole structure, you know, the whole structure's permeable, it's like a, a natural kind of shoreline, you know.
Dissipate the energy.
Yes.
So where do you stand with Harbor Committee then?
We're waiting for their environmental, um, review.
I would hold this maybe, because we usually work in sync with them, and I'd like to not have to come back if they make any further changes.
Okay, so, yeah, so, we've been there, what, two months with them right now? Three months?
Three, I think we're conscious of that, we're back.
From our point of view, we're pretty much good, but we'd like to hear if they have anything further, I mean, it, it.
I mean, if we're good, then you, and we go, then you, you coming back for some form of modification, so what's your thoughts?
But that holds things up for these guys, 'cause we've gone back and forth with Harbor Committee before.
They might, if we, if we issue it, they might.
My gut feeling, ladies and gentlemen, since we had these three meetings where we came to a common goal and a common des- design, that we should be in pretty good shape. I, I think, you know, the, again, the reviewer, uh, Mr. Voorhees from Nelson &amp; Pope, he already reviewed it technically, he's already reviewed these plans. So I would hope that anything would be, not, that would be a design modification, maybe a clarification, but that's where I think we would be.
Okay.
So, you know, as far as, you know, any modification at this point on, we're gonna have to go back to the other agencies anyhow.
Right, so again, you have all those already approved.
They're all ready to go.
So my, my point is, if you're already meeting our tests, then perhaps we can move forward and, you know, you just add one more to the list.
Four, four out of fives, okay.
Right, so.
Well, when you go talk to the next, to the Harbor Committee, you have everybody on board, so.
I'm fine with it.
Where can we, where can we go from this?
So my question, though, is, um, the annual monitoring.
Okay.
Because that's an important consideration, who does it, um, who do you, is it?
It's gonna be us, AM Weber Associates.
Okay.
And we've actually talked with Department of State, and they've requested that we, now they do the monitoring, but we provide a report to them. Uh, and, all agencies are gonna get it, 'cause this is, this is a lesson learned for all of us, as we work our way through this process, we all need to review and say, hey, what's going on here? 'Cause with all these minds, and all these minds with the other agencies, I think we'll get it right. You know, if things go south somehow, but again, I think it's important that we keep the feedback going after the permit.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, no, it's critical. Is it for five years?
Five years, exactly, yeah. We advise a client of that, it's a five-year process. We're keep notifying everybody what's going on, and we'll see that in, once I do our report. If everything's going good, that's fine, but if things aren't, don't go, go, we see something different, we wanna, perhaps come back to the board, go back to the DEC, Department of State again. Department of State has asked us, and I've also had, Stonyburg University has approached me about this, these concepts, this design. And, uh, and Seagrant and also the Conic, uh.
Estuary program?
Estuary group, they wanna meet with us also about this design, so I'm gonna meet with them and hopefully have them come on board with us to help do the review as we go through the process, once we start it.
That's good.
James, you had a question?
Yeah, I just recommend that, that language be put on the permit, uh, in the description of work, uh, that.
Not in the special conditions, that there's annual monitoring that's to be, to be done. What time of year are you gonna do that?
Four times, uh.
No, what time of year?
For the annual.
No, for the annual, no, annual monitor, module will be conducted, I have a plan here, a monitoring plan, and we're gonna conduct it, uh, for five years. It's gonna be conducted, conducted three times a year, May first, August first, and October.
Great.
Before, during, and after.
Okay, and then one report.
And one, and the reports will be submitted to all agencies.
Okay.
And it's gonna have to get us in shorelines, distances off a bunch of, of common, uh, objectives, you mean hot water, mean low water, the rocks. We're gonna look at structural stability, say if anything's settling, we're gonna do vegetation analysis on, on root density, stem coverage, upland wetland. We'll take photographs, walls are the same, fixed points every, every time, and then we'll do some near map photography, we'll do, we'll, we'll, if it's applicable, we'll, we'll get it in there at least to give it that overview. And if, if any of the rock sills, we're also gonna observe marine plants, animals, particles, things that are attached organisms, grasses. At relative abundance, and then we'll talk about, uh, if the rock sills start moving a little bit, we'll talk about that too. So that's kind of our analysis.
Okay, that's good. It's stupid, there's not a way to include, uh, installation of eelgrass in here too. No?
It's like, looks something on top of my head, I don't know what's gonna work.
Well, we, I can speak to that in Cornell. We've done multiple eelgrass plantings in Sag Harbor Cove over the last, uh, twenty years, and they've all been, uh, not very succ-. None of them have been more successful than a year.
I know.
There's something that's happened. Um, I just wanna give you a heads up that in the twenty, or thirty years that I've been fishing and working in Sag Harbor Cove, the shoreline is completely like, or, or has almost vanished all the way around, all the Spartina and all the other natural vegetation. I don't know if it's something with the tidal fluctuation, something in the water, or the amount of, uh, you know, geese that are down there, which really predate on the grass. I mean, you know, puts a nice project, and I can see the fifty or sixty Canadian geese come along and just take it out within a couple of weeks.
And they're pulling out, this is newly planted grasses?
Old grasses.
You mean old grass?
Yeah, they, the whole north side, the whole north side of, sorry, Upper Sag Harbor Cove along Long Beach, almost all the vegetation is going out of there now.
But doesn't that have to do with the poor water quality in the cove?
It, it, this is, I don't know if it's poor, the water quality, it, it's specifically something inherent to that part of the cove there.
I mean, you know, in my report here, I can kinda see it all coming back here, you know, this is where the head of all the vegetation, which has had been. So, you know, my belief of course is that it was, you know, wave action predation and stuff like that, but it's not to say that you can't have another effect, you know, predation, and that we can't even measure, you know. If you observe, and the observation's important, and what I can't, I see physically here. So if in fact, they've changed their diet and are actually feeding on Spartina, Walton flora, are they feeding on, feeding on the soil?
The roof, they just ripped the roof right out, yeah.
Cause it's kinda sandy soil there?
Yes, it is, yeah.
You got the waves, you ain't got the geese. It's, it's like a hundred geese, what?
The.
I chase them from house to house.
Well, you know, yeah.
The living, the living shoreline that was installed in, um, West Hampton on Riches Bay, they covered the plantings, yeah?
Yeah, we, we can do that definitely. I mean, I will have to advise Mr. Spiegel, he's gonna be looking at some nice Mylar stuff and the fishing lines and stuff like that, but if that's what we have to do, because it's, it's almost.
And to let it stop.
Installed on a year-round basis then, over in West Hampton?
Yes.
Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah, yeah, you know, cause that's, we don't wanna go through a failure, cause that's, that's a great, yeah, we'll put a.
If you put net in them, they don't like to walk to the net, cause it gets stuck in their feet and they stick their heads.
That's on the seaweed side, or?
Yeah, where they're gonna go up. They're not gonna fly into.
Thirty years ago, they were migratory birds, now they're year-round birds.
Okay, we'll, we'll definitely put a goose predation plan in, and we can get you a copy of what I, what I designed.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, the monitoring would be great, and putting it in the cover sheet and the description of work, rather than in the special conditions. Then we can move this forward then, with the hope that, that, um, the harbor committee.
You can even take the, the cheap plastic, that's what I use, you can, I put on, um, tie it to two-inch PVC pipe and lay it down, and they won't walk over it. Then you take.
Kind of like a cantilever.
Then you, you take it away when it gets grown.
Okay. Do we need stand plans for this kinda project, or is?
We'd ask for, um, landscape bark, it's tech, stand, stand plans, that's what we have in the.
For consistency, you're gonna need a stand plan.
Okay, we get one.
So stand plans and a cover sheet with the new language of the monitoring plan.
Okay.
And, uh, for. And all I do is predation to that.
Yep.
Scanner?
It'll work. We'll let you know what works, what doesn't work. Thanks, you did great advice.
There was a nice article in Newsday about living shorelines and stuff.
Yeah.
Which, I, people are getting the concept, it's, it's reality now.
That's what I've been telling people, you know, today they're, okay, today they're up, well, they're gone, we really have to start looking at these type of.
You just gotta get the formula correct, and that's what everybody's doing.
They're so site-specific, and the monitoring is a critical aspect of them, because we have to figure them out as we go along.
So monitoring's a part of it, so.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, as well.
Thank you.
Galapena LLC thirty-three Bluff Point Road, Be Lang Associates.
Morning.
Morning.
Hello.
Dana from Be Lang Associates.
Okay, this is, um, project poses to install ninety-two foot by four-foot fixed pier through flow decking.
Seventy-six feet, we, we've reduced the size of the catwalk, um, to a total of seventy-six feet and six feet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I don't have an updated cover sheet that I'm looking at. So, just check those plans and see what the date is on them, make sure.
Uh, November thirteenth.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yes.
Okay.
We need an updated cover sheet, correct?
Yeah, we need an updated.
I sent one, um, you had emailed me and I sent one over last week.
It might not have come in yet, cause we requested it at the end of last week.
Yes, it was.
So this is project on Sag Harbor Cove, um, for fixed pier, um, with the floating dock, there are.
No floating dock.
No floating dock.
No, we removed the ramp, the floating dock, we really couldn't get to the depth that we required within that sixty feet. Um, so now we're back to just a fixed catwalk, there was one there previously, um, and we talked about previously, like, maybe ending it about twenty-five feet or twenty-five feet, there's zero water, so there's no water between.
Can you do an overhead shot on this, please?
There's no water between like twenty-five, thirty, forty feet at mean low, so we got past there, at sixty feet, there's a foot and a half.
Right, James, if you just draw back on it, as you can see from the surrounding properties, everything is very, is very, uh, close to shore here because of the situation with very little water. So, the possibility of a, a boat at this dock is slim. We had suggested, um, did you put a ladder on?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
A ladder and a, and a all-weather light at the terminus end of the pier.
So the all-weather light, that's something that's in our regulations, and Dana was following that. That's something that, uh, the board wishes to have, because that's.
I mean, there's not a lot of boat traffic in there, so I mean, it's not like it's, I want to shoot a cocktail now or something like that, or where there's a lot of boat traffic. I mean, it, it, it'd be alright, because I mean, I don't see any problems with wildlife or anything like that, so.
Only thing is, you'd need an electrical permit from the town.
Unless you do a solar light.
Do a solar light.
Solar light, okay, that makes sense.
You have to also do the, um, the night thing.
The solar makes sense.
Dark skies comply, yeah. But also on your dock, where, see where your posts are? I would just bring the post up, up above the platform.
Okay.
It's, uh, what, the thirty-four inches, I think, is max allowed above?
Yeah, well, even if you just bring it up like a foot, you know, just enough so you mark the edge, and if you ever do tires, at high tide, tie something up along, it doesn't fetch up on it.
Okay.
Because more of a functional dock, this way it's not really a functional dock, you can't really. Cause I go on, I walk on catwalks where there's no edge, and, you know, you, you lose your, the edge sometimes.
Okay, yep, that's not a problem at all.
No, I think it's more for safety.
So we need an updated cover sheet?
Received already?
Okay. Okay, it just, it hasn't gone through our process, so I'm terribly sorry. We will look for our updated, we will bring in our updated cover sheet. With trustee Pell's note about, um, the.
Piling's.
Piling's being higher, do we need change in the plans?
We need the plans, but we need them stamped anyway, so.
Okay.
Can you just show the pilings above the deck of the, uh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Above the deck.
Okay.
And yeah, you already had a ladder on, yeah?
Yes, we have a ladder, a light, um, and we'll get the plans stamped as well.
And this meets pier line, because although the dock is seventy-six feet overall, it's sixty feet from mean high water.
Yeah.
That's what the test is.
James, we're good?
I believe so.
Okay.
I see sometimes people keep the posts up, then they just put rope for a handrail, or you, or you keep them all.
Okay.
But you just have to, um, put in your plans. How high? You don't have to put the rope in.
Okay.
But you can put the, whatever height you want, the four-by-fours, above the deck.
Yes.
And then if your client intends to keep his boat in the area, he just needs a mooring application. I, I don't know what his plan is, or how big his boat is, but how much it draws.
That would be part of the application.
Yeah, no, no, but just.
Nothing to do with the application, that's separate.
Okay.
But.
That's just for information.
Future reference.
Yeah.
That's just so that he, you know, the proper procedure for this.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're.
Don't overload you.
Okay, so I'll make those changes of plans, um, and if there needs to be another update to the cover sheet, just let me know.
Yeah.
I think it might be kind of where we are right today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, you too.
Congratulations, everybody.
Back to, I guess Jeff, right?
Hey Jeff. Everything on one eighty-three Thoreau Road. I was up there yesterday, matter of fact. What do you got?
All right, so we did the, based on the meeting we had last month, or the month before, it was October, actually, eh, last month, um, we amended the, the plan quite a bit here. The concern of the trustees was the projection of the proposed dock with the floating dock, and tying a boat up to the floating dock. Originally, excuse me, originally we had it twenty-eight feet long for a fixed pier, and then the potential to put a floating dock, a, a boat onto the side of that, um, that would project that another, say, ten or twelve feet. So, that's an additional twenty feet, uh, that we removed. So we modified the location, the length of the proposed fixed pier to twenty foot away from the existing face of the bulkhead. So that's gonna be the maximum projection of anything, it'll just be twenty feet out, which really widens out that area that was concerned with boat traffic in the rain across the street. In addition to that, we also created additional open space, um, I should say, bay bottom back to, uh, uh, wetlands of, of, uh, a seaward space. So we removed land, and we're giving back water, um, on the north side. So where you can see the dash line is the existing bulkhead, um, we widened it out to the, to the north, and adding in boat basin area, which will include dredging, um, and then added in a, a ramp and a floating dock in the center with one tie-off pile. So the whole project here is really lessen the impact out into the width of the canal, and then increase surface area for the, um, uh, the boat docking areas.
So that north side?
Yes.
The, there's a bulkhead that's protruding out into the canal a bit? Like outside?
No.
No.
This line right here is the existing bulkhead, correct?
Yeah, the dash line's the existing.
Sorry, this is the old bulkhead.
Yeah.
It's being removed, and then added.
The hashed part is all new bulkhead.
That's the hashed, the hashed is the decking behind the bulkhead.
Yeah.
The bulkhead is this, this black line.
All right, and then what's going out into the creek?
We have a twenty-foot wide, uh, four by twenty-foot, uh, four-foot wide, twenty-foot long fixed pier, um, and that's to gain access to the side of the boat. And then in the center of that little boat basin that's been created, or actually widened, um, is gonna be a, what size are we going with here? A, the three-foot wide by fourteen-foot long ramp, and a six-by-twenty floating dock.
Okay, so the floating dock's in the middle.
In the middle, yeah.
Of the boat slip.
So it's potential for two, two vessels.
Actually, three.
You can't.
You can only do two by regulation.
But there's enough room for three, that's the trouble.
No, where?
So you, technically, you could put one on, on the inside here, and one here, and then one here.
Well, so we. What's that width?
Seventeen feet, cause he has a big boat, so I believe the beam of the boat is like fourteen.
How big a boat is it?
I think it's a forty, forty-two.
It's gotta be at, at least fourteen, fifteen.
Yeah, it's like a fourteen-foot beam, if I recall.
So how much is that projecting out into the canal?
Uh, it's only twenty feet.
It's project.
Oh, the whole, the width of the bulkhead is twenty-five feet, and the pier is twenty feet, so it's a total of, uh, forty-five feet from.
But you go on landward when you talk to that.
Yes.
And the boat will then be completely, a forty-foot boat will be completely, um, enclosed within the boats?
Within the boats.
Yeah, it wouldn't protrude into the.
No protrusion, out in, which is.
Probably a little bit, cause you're not gonna put your bar weight up against that bulkhead.
Yeah, but still, it's gonna be, uh, third, third, yeah.
And it, on the, on the south side, where it's twelve-foot wide, that leaves for his little, little boat, little smaller area. And obviously, there's no potential for docking on the north side of that fixed pier.
You have to get away with some of that, um, decking, cause you don't need decking around the hallway.
Okay.
Cause you already have, there's already, you already have some, um, grass, you look in that picture here, and you see that.
Is it all lawn?
No, it's, what's, it's grass, long grass, but it's other, the other type of grass too, it's mixed in there.
Oh, phragmities?
Phragmities, and you have those other, the other, the other grass, what, has to get wet.
Have white capping, or?
Yeah, cause I went up there with a boat yesterday. It's gonna be, the, that deck will be integral to the capping, so it'll be four-foot wide from the face of the bulkhead.
Okay.
You need a buffer, you need the six feet of buffer behind this bulkhead.
Six foot.
But to trustee Pell's point, so if, um, if we remove some of the decking, um, if you had access for the, uh, catwalk on the north side, some decking there, but then removed some of the decking on the south side and along the eastern section, just so that there's access.
From the ramp, from the boat ramp, from the ramp going down, so we'll take it from the south out.
Yep.
Everything from the south of that ramp.
Actually, you only need it from, you only need it, you only need it on the north side, in a, in a, in a small, a small piece.
Yep.
From the thing, you don't need the whole end, because you're not gonna.
Yeah.
That's a waste.
So just leave access, leave a deck.
Access to get to the ramp.
To the floating dock, and then access to.
Everything south of that, remove.
So remove the majority of it and install.
Which is why I asked the question, so how, what, are you gonna go with the two-foot capping?
Uh, it will be now, whatever the width of, it's gonna be eight, uh, ten, eight, ten, it's gonna be about two feet.
Which is capping, yeah.
It's really just capping, cause you have the face well, if we do a navy wall here, face well, rear well.
So you'd be able to.
And the rest would be the buffer.
So you'll, you'll, you'll have an ability to at least get around that capping?
Yep.
Yeah, uh, yeah, now, I, I'm.
You're confused.
Point here, easy.
So.
So if we, we could do up in here, this is fine, would we be able to do here, down, and then stop right here?
No.
Or you don't want anything here, stop it right here?
Yeah.
Stop it there, and then a four-by-four here?
Just access.
Yeah.
And you, you'll have a two-foot capping?
And a two-foot capping around the, the remain.
And then a vegetated buffer with need of vegetation, no irrigation after the first season?
Okay.
And, uh, no fertilization?
Six-foot inclusive of.
Can you do an overhead shot?
No, it's ten.
Total of six or ten? It's ten.
Ten, yeah, so, to up to the bulkhead where there's no, or up to the capping? Cause now it's all lawn, except for where? Trustee Pell, you said you looked at it?
Yeah, it's, it's, they go down, and right, this side gets wet all the time.
Okay.
That's all, and that's all wet, so.
That'll be part of the ten-foot buffer, we'll just leave it natural.
Leave it all natural, and that, that work has to be done from.
Probably the smallest thing you could do.
Yeah.
From the seaside.
Yep. Definitely keeping the boat intact in there is not gonna interfere with the marina across the way.
Right.
Or the passage from the marina down the way?
It's still gonna be tight, cause you got the boat, the bow is sticking out from the other people, you, you gotta.
What is the, this, do you have a shot that's showing that distance?
It's a hundred and seventeen feet.
From mean high water to mean high water?
Uh, mean low, mean, to the bulkhead.
Bulkhead, the bulkhead.
Mean, mean low on our side, to the bulkhead on the other side.
Yeah, so you have slips on both sides, sticking out.
And a lot of passage back and forth, a lot of boat traffic there.
Good water, had five feet all the, low tide.
It's good water.
So, so, how far off the, off the bulkhead is that float that's there now? That pretty distant float is?
Next door.
With the neighbor?
That's neighbor, I.
How far off is that, James?
I would say roughly six feet.
So as a reference point, can you put a point of the maximum extent?
At eighteen feet.
Eighteen, well, in between is six feet probably, with a reef.
So what are you asking, Scott?
No, just as, if you could show a reference point of how far out the end of that, that dock or catwalk, or whatever you're gonna call it, is gonna be, how far out?
Twenty feet, the fixed pier.
The fixed pier, so it's gonna look like.
The new one, yeah.
The new one.
Go out twenty feet from the corner.
Yeah, but he's moving the bulkhead, so I can't really.
The bulkhead in that position is gonna be the same.
This is the existing bulkhead here, and then he's moving it.
Right, but from that point, that's the same, so, so it's gonna be twenty feet from there, so you can put a point twenty feet from there, and that'll give you the visual that you're looking for.
From here?
Yes. Right?
Yep.
Cause that's fixed.
Correct.
So if you take that visual from there, twenty feet, then you're gonna see exactly what you're looking for.
Twenty feet, yeah.
Okay, so there.
Low the room.